I will ask, please, that Sherri, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yeah, President participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Hussein?
President participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Wood?
President participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Spitzley?
President participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Jackson?
President participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Betts?
President participating remotely, unfortunately, from Lansing, Michigan. I do wish we were in person.
Councilmember Garza?
I am present participating remotely from South Lansing, Michigan.
And Councilmember Dunbar, just in time.
Thank you. President participating remotely from South Lansing.
All members present.
All members present, thank you, in a quorum. So first things first, we have our minutes from March 22, 2021, Mr. Vice President.
Here, I would move the meeting minutes as presented.
Minutes have been moved. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
Right. Next up on our agenda is public comment on agenda items. For those members of the public wishing to comment, you'll have three minutes to speak. The items on our agenda, and that would be the items with our discussion or action, as well as the CDBG budget and the budget presentation. So if there, I do see, to raise your hand, it is Alt Y on a PC, Option Y on a Mac, or Star nine on your telephone. And I see one person has raised their hand. Elaine Fishoff, you'll be our first. You'll have three minutes, and we will close the sign up list for public comment at the conclusion of Elaine Fishoff's comments.
Okay. Good evening, Council. Elaine Fishoff, resident of Lansing. First, I want to commend the council on what I, what appears to be the 12.5 million contract with Johnson Controls for sustainability, building and infrastructure improvements. And secondly, with respect to the last agenda item, the FY 2021, 2022 budget policies, with respect to the paragraph on environmental stewardship, the last sentence doesn't make any sense. It reads, "The city recognizes to reduce the city's net emissions output, increase its energy efficiency, and improve its wastewater." Da-da-da-da. I think there's some words missing. I don't know if somebody's already corrected that, but I wanted to bring that to your attention. Otherwise, I'm glad environmental stewardship appears in your priorities. Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you. Is there anybody who wishes further to address the council or the committee, excuse me? All right, seeing no one, we will move on to our presentations. The first is on the CDBG Community Development Block Grant Budget. Sherri, who's doing that one again?
That would be Don Kohanik and Doris Witherspoon.
You know, this is my fourth go around. I think I should know that by now.
Yep.
Oh, this is, this is Don right here.
Hey, Don.
And you ready for me to go?
Yes, yes, we are.
Okay. And so this is Don Kohanik, development manager here for the city, and I'm joined on the line by Doris Witherspoon, Senior Planner within the Development Office. And we're here, as we are every year, to discuss our entitlement funds. The City of Lansing is an entitlement community for CDBG, Home, and ESG. And as part of our process, in order to accept those funds from the federal government and spend those funds, we have to go through a planning process. This is called our annual action plan. And as part of that, we have to come to city council and present them to you here today. All we're asking for today is the setting of the public hearing for April 26, 2021. There is, this year, the city has been awarded $2,057,221 of CDBG funds. That's a 6% increase over last year's funding. And those funds are used for our housing rehab projects, as well as some economic development activity and public services. The city has been awarded $768,361 in home funds, and those funds are used mostly for new construction of affordable housing, as well as some down payment assistance. In addition to that, the city has been awarded $176,439 in the Emergency Solutions Grant, or ESG. That's a decrease of about 1% from last year's funding. As you know, ESG has been flooded with additional funds in the last year, however, from, from those additional COVID funds they, they've got. And those funds are used for street outreach, emergency shelter, homelessness prevention, rapid rehousing, and the HMIS, the homeless, I'm sorry, Homeless Management Information System. We have a citizen participation plan which we follow. So this has already been presented, and I believe two different occasions before the planning board. And, but as part of our citizen participation plan, we do present at city council as well. And once again, we're, we're only asking for the setting of the public hearing. Happy to take any questions you might have.
All right. Thank you very much for your presentation, Mr. Witherspoon. I'm sorry, Mr. Kohanik. We've got Carol with, Carol Wood with a question.
I see Doris's hand went up, so I don't know whether she had something to add before my questions or not.
Doris, before we get started with questions, did you have something you'd like to add? Go ahead and unmute yourself if so, let me.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a correction in terms of the ESG funding. That's 174,439. I think John said 176, but that's 174,439 dollars, and it's a decrease of about 1%. We lost about $2,013 for that. But other than that, we'll be glad to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you very much for that clarification. First up, we have Councilmember Wood, and then Councilmember Betts.
Thank you, President Spatafor. You indicated that there was an increase in the, the other funding, not the emergency funding. What, why was there an increase?
So HUD determines these grants based on a formula. That is their formula. And what determines that, that increase? To some extent, it's how much Congress budgets for it. The budget might waiver a little bit from year to year. In other words, Congress may have just budgeted a little bit more money. But there's other things that can factor into it, such as the level of poverty within the city, the overall population of the city, et cetera. Their formula for determining this, I, I think I looked it up once years ago, is enormously complex, and a lot of the factors that go into it are information that you can't really readily get to your fingertips anyways. But I, as you, I think you know, Carol, this varies every year. It's never the same number from year to year. And for many years, it went down at small percentages. Small percentages, it went down from year to year, but this year, you know, an increase.
Okay. And when we look at the rehab money that we have, where are we in that program currently? Are we current with the requests that are coming in? Are we six months, a year behind? Can you give us an idea on that?
So in terms of what we call full rehabs, those are, those are the rehabs where we go in and do a major amount of work to improve the habitability of a house. I don't know exactly what our waiting list is, Carol, at this point in time. But I will tell you that we've been doing so well within our program that we're really, at this moment, not doing full rehabs. Rather, we're doing what we call emergency rehab programs, which is focusing in on individuals who need, well, emergencies addressed. Those are usually roofs, water heaters, electrical problems, and, and that kind of thing. So the, the program's healthy. It's, it's doing well. I don't, I'm sorry, I know exactly how long the, the waiting list at this, is at this point. But again, we're not able to get, dig into that waiting list at this particular moment because, because we've been spending through the funds well.
In the program, is there any money set aside for ramps?
I'm sorry, money set aside for what?
To do ramps for accessibility.
Oh, absolutely. We do set aside, I'm just gonna flip through here for a second. For some reason, I don't have that figure right in front of me, Carol. But we fund the Tuesday Toolman here in the City of Lansing, and they do a ramp, they do usually about one ramp a week, I think, maybe sometimes two ramps a week during the construction months. And we, we fund that, that program, the Tuesday Toolman. It's a great program that involves a lot of volunteers who go out, and it's run directly through the capital area Housing Partnership, CAHP.
And I think, I think that's my last question. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. I think I said next was Councilmember Betts, followed by Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you.
You know, excuse me, Doris, did you want to say something?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I think the Tuesday Toolman comes under Public Services, which includes a lot of things like neighborhood cleanups and, and home repair and things of that nature. So that's 15% of our CDBG budget, and that's a little over $308,000. But our ramps, I don't know specifically, but it will come under the Public Services.
Thank you. Councilmember Betts, correct? Yes.
Yeah. Thank you, President Spatafor, and thank you both, Don and Doris, for being here today. I've got a couple questions, pretty specific here, but I'd like to discuss them. First, in the objectives for the community development, or the community development objectives that are listed here, one of the goals is increasing security and safety in neighborhoods by promoting public safety and crime prevention initiatives. Wondering what part of our CBD, CDBG budget, I apologize, is allocated towards those initiatives?
Hi, this is Don again. This language, and you're, you're looking at basically the first page of the document. And this, this language is intended to be very broad and cover sort of everything that we can do with CDBG. At this point in time, we don't use any of the funds for this particular purpose. In the past, however, I believe CDBG funds have been used to fund, and Doris will jump right in and correct me if I'm wrong, because she has this memory. I believe there was a neighborhood officer who may have been funded with CDBG funds in the past. But that's not something we currently do.
Okay, great. Thank you. One additional question, and then I'll see the floor here. What departments and agencies have access to the Homeless Management Information System? I haven't heard about this before, and it's something that I have some interest in.
I, I can answer that question. And in reference to our, we did have our community police officers that were funded in the past. But, you know, as you guys know, we operate on a five-year consolidated plan. So all of our goals and objectives that we identify will probably stay the same as we work through our five-year plan. But in terms of the homeless population, we fund, or we give our funding to the City of Lansing Human Relations and Community Services Department, and Matt Stevenson is over the Homeless Management Information System. So he's responsible for that. And I believe he has a couple people working under him as well. Did that answer your question, or did you have another question?
Oh, yeah, I guess it's an information system. So I figured there might be cross-departmental access or sharing with private organizations. And we just, I kind of wanted to get to understand what sharing looks like. I mean, you know, I guess I'll be honest, one of the things that I've been thinking about is sharing that information with the police department and what that looks like, to be blunt. However, I think that it's a more general question, because, you know, if we're sharing this with private agencies, you know, there might be some issues with personal identifiable data and stuff like that being shared, places that maybe the homeless population doesn't want it to be shared. And I think in particular, since we're funding this and we're voting on the funding for this, I think that where that data is used is something that I, I, I think is important for us to discuss moving forward.
Yeah, I, I believe Matt has worked with the City of Lansing Police Department, but don't quote me on that. At one point in time, we were able, with our Emergency Solutions Grant, as many of you know, and I know Carol probably remembers this, at one time, it was emergency shelter. But in 2014, they changed it to Emergency Solutions Grant due to a health act. And so there was a time that our department, even though we have always phoned that out to the Human Relations and Community Services Department, there was a time where we did the reporting in our information system, which is IDIS. But now they report everything in, in HMIS or a system called SAGE for the homeless population. But I believe that Matt does work with the police department. But again, like I said, don't quote me on that.
Okay, thank you very much. And thank you, President Spatafor, again, for the time. Continue.
No problem. Thank you. Councilmember Jackson, followed by Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I'm just trying to understand a little better. It looks like CBDG is more or mostly about housing and housing-related needs, and also streets and sidewalks and improvements. Is that true? And first, and then, can, can this money be used for other things outside of these general blocks that we have here? I see the first page with the different letters. And one question I have is, for example, does any funding go towards high-speed internet for various buildings and low and moderate income homes? Because I see there's a lot of other assistance. But when you, in letter G, promote economic opportunity by facilitating economic development and opportunities and job training, I mean, that goes hand in hand with internet, especially during the pandemic. So I just wondered if we use any funds for that. And also, would this be the place to, for people who want to see either homeless shelters or warming shelters or cooling stations opened or extended longer? Is this where the funding comes from? Because I know there was problems earlier this year where we can't open them for as long and as many places as we want because of funding and staffing or other reasons. So I wonder, is this the time to bring that? Thank you.
Okay. Hi, this is Don again. Your first question was kind of broad. I mean, we do fund some economic development. We fund some micro, with, with these funds, we, we dedicate a small portion to micro enterprise development, which is through our sub-recipient, Michigan Woman Forward. And yes, we can spend these funds on other things, but this has always been a housing, an affordable housing-oriented program. But we do, for instance, we provide some funding to Cristo Ray for, oh my goodness, the Office of Financial Empowerment. And obviously, I just mentioned CAHP for Tuesday Toolman. That also includes the, the tool truck that goes around to, to different neighborhoods. There's neighborhood cleanups. I'm sorry, I just don't have a comprehensive list in front of me. But we do spend, you know, funds in a variety of different ways. But there is definitely a housing theme to most, to most of the funds. And I'm sorry, I've forgotten. Remind me your second question, Brian?
Well, I just wondered if anybody put up internet anywhere for places?
We, we haven't recently, at least in the last, like, five or six years, funded internet accessibility. We may have in the distant past. Doris would have that memory, I think, as well. But I'm sorry, I thought you had a second distinct question, and I've forgotten that.
It's related to warming shut centers and such.
Oh, and that's actually, I was, I was gonna punt that question to Doris as well. I don't think any of these funds are, are spent on any kind of warming or cooling facilities. But Doris is more in touch with the COC and what they do. So, Doris.
Okay, thanks, Don. Councilman Jackson, in terms of the, one of the things we have with our new five-year plan, which we will be working on in 2022 through 2026, there are some new requirements in that plan. One of them specifically addressing broadband. So I think that we will be focusing on some of that when we start working on our new plan. But, you know, we do a little bit of that in economic development. In terms of the warming centers and the homeless information, as many of you know, I am involved with the Continuum of Care in this community, which is the group that deals with the homeless population and so forth. So we do address, and we do know what's going on, like with some of the centers and so forth. But the Continuum of Care also, you know, there's money that they receive from HUD and, and our, our money. The ESG that we have in this community is specific for six components: rapid rehousing, street outreach, homeless prevention, what am I missing? HMIS, administration, and there's something else that, shelter operations. So, you know, they're specific to those types of needs. And I think that the, there are some agencies that receive ESG funding, as well as other funding in this community, MISTF funding, DOC funding. So, you know, they, those, those areas are receiving funding, but may not necessarily be through our source.
Mr. President, if I may, just ask one more question. So I guess this is kind of just a more big picture. So we have our action plan that we submit, and then we receive our funding based on the action plan. And then we, who divvies out the money based on the action plan, and whose ultimate ideas are, I guess, on it? Because it's so broad. And then what do you do, like, when you choose which ones to fund and not?
I, I could talk a little bit about ESG, and then Don can talk about how CDBG and home works. You know, like I said, I'm part of the CLC. When we give the money to our Human Relations and Community Services Department for the ESG funding, we work with the Continuum of Care. And we have formal application process. We advertise how much money we have in the community. And like I said, not only are we getting city ESG funds, but we're also getting MISTF funds and some Continuum of Care funds. So we advertise the funding, and it is on the community, on the Continuum of Care's website. We advertise that and invite applicants to come and apply for the funding. We talk as a community about the needs of the homeless population. With the funding that we receive, like the 174,439 for this year, every year since this funding pot has changed, we are allowed 7.5% for administration. And of the funding, street outreach and, and and shelter operation cannot exceed 60% of the ESG budget. So when we are in meetings, we have to keep all of that into consideration. And we talk about the community needs, agencies talk about what they need in the community and so forth. And that's how we decide, you know, the dollar amounts and so forth with each of those categories. And then people apply for, we, we rate the applications. We have people come in and discuss the needs and so forth in the community. And that's how we determine how we allocate the ESG funding.
That response to your question, Councilmember Jackson?
It was. I was still kind of curious about the CBDG.
So, so it's done again. And for CDBG and home funds, we discuss it internally within the office and work with Brian McGrane, our departmental director, on making those decisions. And, and we can come to conclusions of a variety of different ways. For instance, right now, with regard to home funds, we are in the process. We just did an RFP, a Request for Proposals, and we're actually in the process of review, reviewing the submissions we got on that RFP that will guide us in making our home decisions this upcoming year. And a lot of what we do is look at what we have been funding and assess whether or not it's working or not. Is, is, for, for instance, the Office of Financial Empowerment working? Well, yes, it is. Is it a service that's needed? Well, yes, it is. And, you know, we'll, we'll discuss it with our nonprofit partner, and we discuss it internally as well. And, and then make, make our, our best decision.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Closing out the questions is Councilmember Garza.
I thank you, Council President. Thanks. Good evening, everyone. When you're talking about providing standard housing in a suitable living environment, what efforts are you doing to ensure that we are hiring local workers, local contractors?
Well, the first thing, when it, when it comes to housing and, and contractors, is there's not a, how should I put this? There's not a huge pool out there right now. And that's because, well, there may be a huge pool, but they're a busy pool, as I think you know. And in terms of contractors we work with or who will work with our program, there's, there's just not a lot out there. And in terms of local, we, we are, we do outreach. And, and we try to stimulate as much interest as we can from, from contractors. And I'm not sure I have a better answer for, for you than that. We're not, certainly don't exclude any local contractors. I, offhand, as I'm sitting here, sir, I, I don't actually know where our individual contractors are headquartered, to be honest with you. But if there is anyone listening to this right now, who is a contractor, who, who is in need of work and wants to learn more about our program, we are always open to new contractors. We want to hear from you. And we have an application process for contractors. They can submit an application, and we'll review the application. And if they, they meet our standards, they'll, they'll be put on our list and, and able to bid on our projects.
Okay, so, you know, I'm not sure if this is in the, the right wheelhouse. It seems like, you know, the Mikey 23 Foundation, see, he's been doing great work in the City of Lansing. I'm not sure if that's something, if you've ever reached out to him, because it seems to be working quite a bit right now and, and doing some great things for the City of Lansing.
And we, we understand that as well, and we have, and, and I say we, not me, but staff has definitely reached out to, and I believe it's Mike McKissick, and spoken directly to him in years past. And, and I agree with everything you just said a moment ago, characterizing the work that they do. But the, the feedback we've had in the past is that, that they weren't interested in participating directly with what we're doing, that I think they were satisfied with what they were, with what they were already doing.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you very much. I don't see other hands. Gonna pause. Okay, I don't see other hands. So the resolution before us does set a public hearing on this for the 26th of April in front of the full city council at 7:00 PM. So with that, I would ask for a motion from our Vice President.
So moved.
Resolution has been moved. Is there further discussion on this, besides thanking the staff that presented this evening for their thorough responses? All right. Seeing none, if the clerk would please call the roll on the CDBG budget resolution. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, setting public hearing for the resolution, C D B G budget.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Yes. Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Spadfor?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero for setting the hearing for April twenty-sixth.
Very good. The next item we are going to hear is a, it says general budget overview, including fees, revenue and fringe. And that is from Jake Brower. And I think Jake, I see Mr. Wittigan is on, but Mr. Brower, I think the floor is yours.
Excellent.
What I'm going to ask folks to do too is we'll go through this presentation. If you have questions, I know Mr. Brewer always does a phenomenal job of keeping track of our inquiries and follow-up from the administration. So he's going to continue that task this year. So if you have questions that need follow-up, he will track them down. As of now, it looks like we may not need to do our special column with nineteenth, but we are going to ask that if there are specific departmental questions that you want, we need to, we need to talk about potentially bringing in department folks, bring, bring that up tonight or within the next two weeks, let me know before too soon out so we can get them scheduled to come in and address specific questions and concerns on the twenty-sixth. If we have way too much tonight afterwards and we need to get together back in another week, we, we still have it on the calendar, but we'll decide that tonight before we adjourn this meeting. I just wanted to give you a heads up as to kind of what we're looking at. But that is my plan tentatively, as far as having that special cow. All right, Jake, all you.
Excellent. Good afternoon. Thank you. As you may remember, my name is Jake Brower and I'm the Budget Director for the city. We all last met three weeks ago as I presented the mayor's executive budget recommendation for your review, covering all the major highlights. As you understand, the city reviews the annual budget over a period of two months and holds a public hearing before adopting a final resolution no later than the third Monday in May, this year falling on May seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. And we, the administration, seek to answer all of your questions during this time period. At the previous meeting, we received several requests for information. They sort of should have received a response by email. This includes a copy of the line item budget detail for the executive budget recommendation. We've also provided an Excel copy of this to Eric Brewer, the internal auditor, for his review so he can further help answer your questions. Due to the nature of last-minute adjustments and the messiness of Excel, it does take us a little bit of time to make this readable on top of producing a hundred thirty pages of a budget book. So I do appreciate your patience as we deliver this to you as promised, but a few days after our initial meeting. This is available on the finance page website, which you can see at the URL at the bottom of this PowerPoint, along with this PowerPoint and all these documents, as you can see here. So council members should have received the document that is on this screen. I understand that it is almost entirely illegible in presentation format, so the books are included on the following slide. You can find this document on our website. For general fund operations, you can find the police department and the proposed budget book on PDF page seventy-seven, which is numbered page sixty-nine. We have broken out retirement, information technology and equipment costs for the purposes of transparency. But as you can compare, there are no dollars recommended that are not accounted for within the police department budget and the budget document as a whole. Going into the details, the following areas represent increases to the police budget. Police salaries increased one hundred twenty thousand due to the addition of a social worker and FOIA analyst. The remainder of the salary increases are due to step increases and collective bargaining agreements as ratified by the city council and capital city labor program. Clothing allowances are tied to salary and increased accordingly. These are set by the same collective bargaining agreements. Contractual services increased related to a contract for providing crossing guard services to Lansing Public Schools. This is at a rate of twenty-one dollars, ninety cents per hour for about twelve thousand nine hundred and sixty hours estimated. And this may be reduced based on actual needs of in-person instruction. Lastly, equipment overall decreased except for a one-time thirty-five thousand towards radio testing equipment. There is additional questions on our use of American Rescue Plan Act funds. While final numbers are still being calculated by U S Treasury, early estimates have the City of Lansing receiving just under fifty-one million dollars. Several allowable uses are outlined in legislation, but we're waiting on further guidance before using funds to do more than basically making the city whole for minor losses from COVID nineteen. These uses are outlined in this slide, which has also been made available to council members and the internal auditor. We are further working with the county to coordinate our respective uses of ARPA funds in order to make the greatest benefit to the Lansing area. Now, moving to the main topic of our conversation, let's talk about the budget assumptions used in developing our executive budget recommendation. This includes fringe benefits, what we mean by variable versus fixed and how we arrived at these amounts. This includes our information technology budget and how these costs are allocated across city departments and funds. This includes revenues, which we discussed in a bit during the previous meeting, but have included for continued conversation. And this includes fee changes. We'll then include by discussing major expenditures and changes from the previously adopted fiscal year budget. When looking at the line item budget you received, you'll note within fringe benefits, these are split between fixed and variable. Fixed fringes total sixty point seven million or twenty-six percent of total citywide expenditures and make up forty-six point four million or thirty-one percent of total general fund expenditures. These are benefits that do not noticeably change from vacancies or adding and removing positions within the budget and are allocated among funded positions. Pension contributions total thirty-three point five million dollars, including amortization, which is a portion of the annual city contribution toward unfunded actuary accrue, actuarial accrued liability and normal cost, which is a portion of the annual contribution, which represents a single year accrual of benefits. These amounts are estimated by our actuary on an annual basis, using the assumptions established by the city pension boards, and the city pays the actuarially determined employer contribution on an annual basis. Retiree healthcare and dental totals twenty-four million dollars and represents the estimated benefits to be paid from the city retirement healthcare plans for F Y twenty-two, along with money set aside for healthcare pre-funding pursuant to collective bargaining agreements. This accounts for the recent changes adopted in January this year. Miscellaneous benefits total one point nine million dollars of this amount, including unemployment and paying out remaining vacations, sick and personal leave when an employee leaves the city. This cost is spread out through fixed fringes as it would otherwise result in unpredictable spikes to department budgets. Lastly, workers' compensation is budgeted at one point three million for F Y twenty-two. Variable fringes. Variable fringe benefits are largely distinguishable as occurring through payroll. Unlike fixed fringes, these are directly sensitive to vacancies and new positions added or removed from the city budget. Active employee healthcare total is about ten point four million of the fifteen point four million here. This is tied to individual employee plans and the respective rates and expected increases for F Y twenty-two. But again, Medicare total two point eight million dollars. City pays six point two percent of non-police and fire wages towards social security and one point four or five percent of all wages towards Medicare. Active employee dental and vision plans total seven point eight five or seven hundred eighty-five thousand that are tied to individual employee plans and the respective rates. Other costs include life and disability, defined contribution match and healthcare savings plan match. You can find the information technology budget in the proposed budget book on PDF page sixty-five, which is numbered page fifty-seven. Overall, the proposed I T budget total seven point seven million dollars for F Y twenty-two. As an internal service fund, these costs are funded by charging departments relative to the number of customers and devices being supported. Approximately one point two, one point two million dollars of the I T budget is charged directly to departments for dedicated software. Of the remainder, one hundred thousand is supported through the use of fund balance, which comes from previous year's I T savings. And the remaining six point four percent is split in two portions, with half being charged according to the number of users across the city and the other half being charged according to the number of computers and virtual desktops being supported by the I T department. Overall, charging I T costs through an internal service fund saves the general fund one point five million dollars. This formula has been carefully updated over the past few years, but we're still open to suggestions for improvement and are exploring ways to reduce the overall I T budget. Moving on to revenue sources, overall, about ninety-one percent of general fund revenue comes from either property taxes, income taxes, return on equity and state revenues. Return on equity is a fixed twenty-five million dollars this upcoming year pursuant to our contract with the Board of Water and Light. Property taxes are one of more stable sources of income, totaling forty-six million dollars. At this time, the largest potential risks in this category come from increased tax appeals due to COVID nineteen, along with potential risks to commercial property values due to remote work. Income taxes are particularly sensitive to the COVID nineteen pandemic, with Treasury's estimate for F Y twenty-two standing at twenty-nine point four million dollars. In addition to usual economic sensitivities, remote work allows for non-residents working in the City of Lansing to claim that time against their tax returns. Early returns suggest seventy-five percent of non-resident withholding may have to be returned. This is being carefully monitored by finance and treasury, so we may offer a future substitute with adjustments as we get more information. The pandemic has produced an unprecedented combination of factors to consider here. So we're working with a very limited historical precedence to use as our reference. However, our treasury staff is very capable and so we're doing all we can to arrive at the most accurate estimate possible. Important to note, the governor's budget recommendation included seventy million dollars for relief to income tax cities, including approximately six million dollars for the City of Lansing. This has not been adopted by legislature and so is not included as part of the city budget. However, this would be enormously beneficial to the city's long-term financial health if it passes. On a related note, with state revenues, these have remained surprisingly resilient against the pandemic to date, but estimates from the state project a modest decline for F Y twenty-two. You may recall in F Y twenty, the state cut revenue sharing after the fiscal year had completed, backfilling that amount with federal stimulus. This is explicitly forbidden in the most recent ARPA stimulus money. Overall, we project a total of twenty million dollars here. Going into our charges for services and fee changes, these fee changes can be found in the proposed budget book on PDF pages one twenty-five and one twenty-six. Most of these changes, particularly parks, fire and public service, fall under the category of cost of service increases and matching industry standards. Parks and recreation, there is a new five-dollar fee proposed for non-resident parking. Lansing residents would continue to park free. Under finance and treasury, we're proposing an increase to the charge for fiscal N S F checks. This is for non-sufficient funds. In addition to bank charges, this would reflect the approximately twenty to forty-five minutes of labor between finance and treasury to redeposit checks. We are also proposing a fifteen-dollar fee for electronic N S F checks. There's no bank charge to the city for these, but it does include ten to fifteen minutes of labor by our various departments. We're lastly proposing a thirty-dollar fee for bank adjustments, which mostly result from issues with handwritten and numerical amounts not matching up checks. This averages about twenty to forty-five minutes of labor per item, but doesn't have any direct charges from the bank. The proposed F R twenty-two budget continues investment in maintaining our roads, bridges and sidewalks.
Did you, did you miss the public service fees or did I, did I miss them?
Oh, those are covered under, yeah, so public service includes fee increases for refuse, recycling and wastewater. These are all according to the relative public service plan for upcoming costs and are related to cost of service increases.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
Nope, glad to help you answer that question. Yep. In addition to these infrastructural improvements, the public service department is continuing sanitary and stormwater sewer separation as mandated by the EPA, investing about ten million dollars towards this project. Yep. The proposed twenty-two budget also includes the recent increase to the human, basic human needs ordinance from one point two five percent to one point three five percent of general fund revenues, with the additional funds to be used towards addressing racial justice and equity. This is the first increase since two thousand and one, when this was established in ordinance, as I understand. Although, not being a historian of the city, someone may be able to correct me on what occurred before that day. For the basic human needs portion, council members should all have received a breakout of H R C S recommended agency awards. The racial justice and equity portion has not been awarded yet as H R C S develops a community input-based awarding model. For more information, you can contact our H R C S director, Kim Coleman, and she can speak in greater detail on how they, the city plans to implement this additional funding. Last year's budget included many cuts to our city-supported agencies. This year, we included two hundred forty thousand towards advanced peace, a new program to reduce gun violence. Restored programs include arts and culture grants, My Brothers Keeper, Sister Cities, Community Corrections Advisory Board and Greater Lansing Safety Council. These programs can be found in the proposed budget book on PDF page one oh seven, printed page ninety-nine. For other major changes, our annual pensions contribution is increasing four point one million dollars this year. General fund capital project improvements total eight hundred eighty-four thousand. E D P and facade contracts are funded through ARPA monies. ARPA subsidy is set to increase four hundred fifteen thousand to a total general fund subsidy of one point four million. We're also adding one hundred twenty thousand to the fire budget for community health workers. This year's budget makes a strong commitment towards racial justice and transparency. This includes implementing the recommendations, the mayor's racial justice and equity alliance, the basic human needs increase to one point three five percent, the addition of a social worker and a FOIA analyst to respond to information requests on a timelier basis. For the federal stimulus support we're receiving, the city is partially made whole from the impact of the COVID nineteen pandemic to date. There remain challenges, but the city projects to increase fund balance overall to fourteen million dollars by June thirty, twenty twenty-two. The city continues to make necessary investments in public safety, infrastructure, neighborhoods and our arts and culture, and make serious commitments towards addressing racial justice and equity. Behind the scenes, the city continues to implement best practices to more effectively serve the Lansing community. These continuous improvements, while, while they may not necessarily be directly included in our budget proposal today, make us better stewards of, stewards of the public funds we use to serve Lansing people. If you have any further questions about the F Y twenty-two budget as presented here, we are available and glad to answer any of your questions.
Thanks, Jake. I know we've had a little bit of time with the full budget book, so I anticipate maybe some questions that might not have been covered by this evening, brother's presentation. But I thank you again for being here this, tonight. First up is, well, it's going to be me, but I'll, I'll let, I'll have the council members go first. Councilmember Betts, then Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, President Spadfor, and thank you, Jake, for the presentation today and for being here. Do you have your budget book in front of you? I've got a question on one of these pages.
Right.
All right, I'm looking at one thirteen, page one twenty-one on the PDF. This is the capital improvement program requests. I'm looking specifically at the local street improvements, non-millage line under sidewalks and roads. As I'm reading it here, it says a hundred and thirty thousand. I wanted to see if that was a typo. Last year, it was one million three hundred thousand. And so I guess if you could answer that first.
Could you repeat which one you're looking at?
Local street improvements, non-millage. Local street improvements, non-millage.
I'd have to double check on what's included in last year's budget.
Yeah, according to the, according to the presentation from last year was one million, three hundred thousand.
I'll double check that information for you.
Okay, um, I, assuming that it's right, um, I do have a statement to make about this budget, and that is that we put two point four percent more in our police budget this year. Uh, the mayor had said that this, uh, the social worker was part of our uh policy initiatives here. Um, however, sidewalk and road repair was definitely an important budget priority that we had this year. And if I'm reading this correctly, we've decreased our local street improvements by ninety percent. And on top of that, have decreased our sidewalk repair and gap closure by a hundred thousand dollars. That's pretty surprising to me, and that's the reason I'm thinking that there may be a typo in here. But you know, my, my constituency, while I was knocking doors, you know, I was the one who brought up the social worker. Nobody brought this up to me. I, nobody brought up police funding. What they brought up was road and sidewalk repair. And if this is saying we've decreased our local street funding by ninety percent, that is one hundred percent against what my constituency wants. So, and on top of the increase in the police budget, where we've had a lot of conversations about this too, my constituency wants roads and sidewalks, not more police. So I think, uh, take a look at that, shoot me an email. Uh, we might have to make some changes this budget moving forward. But uh, again, thank you for being here and thank you, President Spatafor.
Yeah, and I will uh note, um, as I'm flipping through my book, I don't have last year's budget book available for uh, an exact comparison, but going to the printed page eighty three, uh, which is the public service uh presentation of the local streets special revenue fund. Uh, you can see the year over year, uh, we're projecting uh, from adopted budget to adopted budget, increasing the local streets uh um expenditure budget from ten point one million to eleven point oh million. Uh, so I'm, it might be a typo in what we presented last year, um, or maybe a typo in my documents this year, although I hope that I presented exactly the best information possible. Um, but overall, local street funding is increasing from ten point one million to eleven point oh million. Uh, major streets is increasing from fifteen point three to sixteen point nine million.
Yeah, I, I think the reason why this is really important is because it's not necessarily the major street improvements that my constituency wants. They're side streets, they're local streets that they're driving in and out of. So if, you know, if we reallocated money in one direction and we say, all right, we need more major street funding, then what I would expect is for us to backfill the general fund and our local street funding so that we can also repair those roads, because it shouldn't be one or the other, it has to be both. And we know that the longer our roads deteriorate in this city, the more and more expensive per year it's gonna be. So we gotta fix these things now. And so that's the reason, like, this is really big news if we're talking about a ninety percent reduction in our local street funding. So again, i- if it's just a typo, that's fine, we'll, we'll call it, we'll call it a wash, but I, I just wanted to check. So I'll, I'll shoot you an email after this as well. Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. The next uh person is Councilmember Jackson, followed by Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, Mr. President. So you mentioned that you, the administration is holding off on spending any extra money beyond allocating, allocating for um making the city whole from COVID nineteen losses. So I guess my question is, so thank goodness for the bailout. I mean, the American Rescue Act just rescued us big time, it seems like. That's really good news, especially when we can fill up the general fund to like, almost like nothing happened, but of course, a lot of things did happen. A lot of people died, a lot of people lost their jobs. And that's serious. But so how much did it take to make Lansing whole from that? And how, so I guess that would then mean how much is left? And where are you guys eyeballing for that?
Yeah, so use of ARPA funds is uh included uh in the presentation uh as you go to looking at the general fund budget. Uh, I think it's around page eleven or so. Uh, printed page thirteen. Uh, you can see us using uh eighteen, about eighteen point four million dollars uh being uh making the city whole from revenue losses, then about four seventy five being used for economic development.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just don't have it right up here. You said eighteen to make us whole. And then.
Seventy five thousand for economic development uses. I can pull up that slide too.
Let me, there's like thirty million that's pending.
Yes, and we have until F Y, until December thirty, twenty twenty four uh to spend that money. And we're, that doesn't include the amounts that was set aside for the um, the county, and we're working with the county. Uh, while we don't have any, while they're in a similar state of uh waiting for guidance from the U S Treasury to determine what can we actually use this money on. Um, we're hoping to coordinate our responses, so we're still providing uh as much benefits and not just entirely making us whole.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Uh, Councilmember Wood.
Uh, thank you. Um, I do have a series of questions and um one that I don't expect an answer for tonight because I will work with um internal auditor. I do believe you've made an error in uh what you have projected for the retiree um portion, the three million, um, sitting on the retirement board and what was approved. I don't believe it was a three million um dollar increase, so wow, we'll work on that to get that number correct.
Yeah, that was from Boomer China, we got that number.
It's not an increase of three million. So it, it is with what we were going to be paying anyways. And then the, then I think it's a seven hundred thousand dollar increase. So, but retrospect will, will work through that. Uh, my first one has to do with the property tax. Um, they're showing um here a proposed increase in property tax. Um, but you just talked about um some of the um hurdles that we might um have to deal with, especially when we're looking at um the um the ability for people um to go to the tax tribunal. So can you tell me why you've estimated an increase?
Yes, so uh, that increase is related to the um, the post-board of review taxable values for uh the city um property values, taking into consideration uh a small amount that I estimated uh due to possible tax tribunal cases and uh capture of Tifa and Libra. And so uh, we're continuing to monitor that with our assessor, and so if we see um any further risks beyond what we've projected as far as that increase, we will offer a substitution. At this time, we are still seeing property tech uh values increase, um particularly with uh personal property, um people moving around, uh property tax values uncapping uh improvements, uh people needing to work from home, so they need a extra bedroom to convert into an office space, et cetera. Uh, so right now, it's a fairly stable source, however, with tax appeals on the horizon um and uh commercial property vet tax values uh having an uncertain future, uh there's potential risks in the future.
But, but we've been told repeatedly down the line um that with uncapping of property taxes, usually that's um uh, uh, one to two years out before we um actually see the benefit um from that. So um, you know, what statistical information do you have that last year we sold enough property that it would be, we would be seeing any increases this year?
I can uh pull the reports that the assessor gave to us.
Could you get us those? I would appreciate that. Um, and then um income tax. Um, looking at this, we're only seeing a modest reduction of one point five million. Um, and um, when we look at um the amount of I guess we bring together, um, when we look at the amount of um people working from home and paying only a half a percent, how was that? Um, how did you, what formula did you use for that?
Yes, I can speak to the um formula used by the uh treasurer. So you may recall um back a previous budget season, uh, we adopted a scenario in which we expected to lose about twenty percent of uh income tax revenue uh based on various factors affecting the pandemic. Uh, over the course of this year, we've seen some factors uh turn out uh better than we expected. However, um, in other scenarios, restricted by the fact that we're still uh sitting here today remotely, uh, things are worse than we expected. Uh, not to mention all the uh human costs related to that. Uh, but as far as income tax revenue, we've updated that twenty percent in the proposed F Y twenty one budget to around twenty four percent. Um, and the uh, our treasurer, Desiree Kirkland, uh feels fairly uh confident in that number today.
Okay, um. And, and looking at the overall um budget, um, especially with the income tax, there was a delay in payment of income tax. Um, both, you know, the, the, along with the federal government, the state government and the city, um, city government as well. Um, have we um seen that those taxes have come in? Um, even with the delay, um, are they being um paid on time or because of the pandemic? Are they not being paid?
As far as the specific timing, I prefer that question to our treasurer on the details of the uh receipt of uh taxes and the timing. However, that was a, it was a factor that occurred last year where there was a delay. And uh, this year, we're pushing back the tax deadline. Uh, there's a certain period after the close of our fiscal year, uh, which is outlined in our audit, and I could get you the exact number of days uh where we can claim uh income tax uh that's paid after June thirty on our um fiscal year uh tax roll uh for fiscal year audit.
If you could get that information off the um audit, I would appreciate that. And then my last um question um for this evening. Um, again, I'll be putting others together. The formula that you used for um the I T, I know that that has been a question that a number of us have been um asking right along as to that formula. And it sounded to me, as you were explaining it, that you could be charged um per unit of a device along with an employee, so you could be charged twice, once for the unit and once for the employee. Did I misunderstand that?
Well, it's.
Councilmember, remember that there is like a total cost. Jake, you have some mic problems, so I'm gonna say, I remember, and you tell me if I'm wrong. There's a total cost for I T and it's divided out by numbers of machines and numbers of, of, of employees sort of by, so if it's a thousand bucks for the tech cost, you pay a certain fee per person and a certain fee per machine, which adds up to that thousand dollars. It's a completely made up number, but that's how that, I think that, so yes, you can be charged for bodies and F and, and machines, but not double charged.
Yeah, so each one is half the charge.
Okay.
Respectively.
Right, so if we're talking about a unit in a police car, you're paying for the unit in the police car, not the fact that you've got four people through a shift in the car.
Yeah, so there's a personnel charge that would be the um four people, and if you're getting into the specifics of how each department, uh, they count the staff up, I would refer that question to Chris Mumbi, uh, our I T director. Uh, but overall, it's a more of a method of costing out the I T department to our various funds.
Okay, I get that. I understand that part of it. So, um, we do know that there are some employees and U A W is one of them that doesn't have access to computers.
Yep.
There are some of the U A Ws, so they're not being, so I'm assuming from what you're telling me right now, they are not being charged for that personnel. Okay, I wanna, I wanna be assured of that.
Yeah, just for users.
Okay, all right, that answers that question. Thank you. And then I'll work with Eric to get some additional questions to you. Thank you.
Yeah, and you'll have noticed throughout our budget document, we've uh separated uh the line items for information technology, so you can evaluate a department's budget uh independently of those uh external charges.
Yes, thank you.
Hey, um, before I move on to Councilmember Dunbar and Spitzley, uh, what I heard was a lot of questions about sort of the revenue component. Um, would, I'm gonna throw this out there, would it be probably preferable to have um our treasurer in on the twenty sixth to do a, at the cow to do a, just an analysis of the revenue projections that they use to build these dollars?
Councilmember would, would like that.
Okay. Um, Jake, if you could uh see if that's possible uh with the treasurer's schedule, um, we would, we'd appreciate that. I think there are some. I, I trust that you could relay the information back, but maybe instead of playing telephone, we might have her uh come and be able to answer directly, um, if that's, if that works for you all. Thank you. Um, so, cool, thank you. So moving on to Councilmembers Dunbar, then Spitzley, and then I have a few questions myself.
Thank you. I was just gonna clarify and I, maybe it's makes sense now, but the the allocation of the I T is taking the entire cost and dividing it by every employee in the city that has it and every machine in the city. And then based on those numbers, however many machines are in each department and however many employees are in each department, that's the number that that department gets. So um, it's not really based on who's using it at any given time. It's, it's, it's literally just the machines and the employees.
Yeah, it's based off of a single, a census at a single point in time that uh the I T department takes.
I do know Mr. Brewer knows this very intimately, because when we, when I first got here, he did a, an analysis of that pretty closely and.
I defer to his wise analysis.
Yeah, and so that's, Kathy and Peter are absolutely correct. While they had allocated amount and they divided it by the employees in the department and also the units within the department. And uh, and I know when I did the analysis before, there was a little discrepancy within the council of the number of personnel that actually was being allocated, so it was adjusted based on Peter's recommendation. So um, they provided that information uh uh before, so like I said, Chris Mumbi, you know, reach out and provide the additional information. Uh, so we can actually see the allocation by the employees in the departments and the number of units, uh, just for cross-referencing purposes.
Thanks, Eric. Uh, Councilmember Spitzley?
Thank you. I just have, I have just one quick question at this point. Have we realized any savings by having um employees go on the four-day week and then avail ourselves of the, of the unemployment system? And then, and, and where are those savings located?
Yes, so those savings, uh, I wasn't keeping direct track in the first round of savings, although I estimate they're approximately similar to the second track. Uh, in the second round, we saved about five hundred thousand uh citywide with about three hundred thousand uh being towards our general fund. And this will go towards our uh general fund vacancy factor for F Y twenty one.
Okay, and then, um, I just have two more questions. Okay. And then, I just have two more questions. The other question is, you're talking about the equity fund. When will we get the recommendations from the Equity Work Group? Or that we can see those equity, whatever they're, they're suggesting for the equity funding?
I believe though, I'm almost certain that will happen before the end of this budget season. Although I believe Kim Coleman's working hard on developing a process. I know that community input is being considered a very vital part of developing that process. And so there's a lot of investigation and exploration going on to develop the best way of awarding those dollars.
Jake, I want to make sure that, I think Councilmember Spitzley specifically asking not about the designated percentage, but the 300 or so thousand dollars for the MRJA work.
How that is being located. So that's, I have, I believe I have received something detailing that. There's some costs which are going towards training, other costs directly related to the MRJA. I think I have that IDMA's breakout somewhere and I can provide that to council members.
I just think it's important that if you're talking about different budget thing, that we need to have the, the information so that we can make an informed decision. I mean, I don't know, I mean, I think it's, you know, if I have to ask for it, if I didn't ask for it, I wouldn't be able to make an informed decision about it. And then my, my last thing is, you talked about the fund balance and that it would be up to 14 million by June 2022? Is that what you said?
June 30, 2022, so the end of this upcoming fiscal year that we're discussing the budget for.
So what will the fund balance be when we vote on the budget?
Yeah, so at the beginning of this fiscal year, so June 30, 2020, the fund balance ended at 10.1 million dollars over the 21 fiscal year, taking into account federal stimulus, updated revenue projections. That number is coming out to 13.8 million. And then for FY22, 14.6 million. And that is detailed on printed page 13 of the Budget Book.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Spitzley. All set? First question for me, Jake. First, I want to say thanks for working with the county. I've had several conversations with our county commissioners, and it sounds like this is gonna be a really good opportunity for us to collaborate and provide services like rental assistance and small business assistance and things like that to keep continuing the track record of trying to help people get through the pandemic and the, the after, after effects. So thank you. This one, you might not be able to answer right now. I know that one of the main usages of the ARP does include some infrastructure, but not the fund infrastructure, like roads and sidewalks and things like that, that Councilmember Betts mentioned earlier. What about stormwater sanitary sewer? I know there's a lot in there with the CSO. Can we supplement the CSO work with some of this stuff? And I'm a big fan, and I know we've got till 2023 or 2024 to spend this, so we shouldn't spend it all in 2020. One, but I do know that there is some built up need on infrastructure. So I didn't know if you've looked into that yet, or if you can just get back to me on that offline or at the next presentation. I'd be curious about what we can and can't spend that on.
Yeah, so based on the language and legislation, they allow for the, to make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. Although, it, the jury's still out on what they define as necessary. So we're being fairly modest until we get some further guidance from US Treasury.
Fine. And then my next question is Fenner parking fees for nonresidents. Seems like a small thing, I know, but is this something Fenner asked for? Where's this coming from?
Came from the fee increase request from Parks Department. I can ask the director for more information, or if you want to reach out to him directly, it's also possible. I'll see if I can get a detailed answer on the origin of the request, but it's fairly standard. I know if I go to most parks in the greater Lansing area, they'll ask like, hey, are you a local resident or not?
Yeah, no, it's, it's typical. I know county parks do it and things like that. I just, it's a, if Fenner's asking for this or what, I know that could be a big, I don't know what their resident versus nonresident, you know, participation rates look like. And if this could be a hindrance to that and be a reverse and set up to go somewhere else. Okay, that's all I got for you. There's a lot in here that council has asked about, but if you could, I see Kathy, Councilmember Dunbar has her hand up, so for, oh, she put it down. If you could please reach out to the treasurer and see if she can be prepared to discuss a few of the things we asked about. Mr. Brewer, if you could, I know you've been keeping track, if you could kind of take a look at your notes and see which questions are specifically related to the treasury estimates that we have, something to guide us for the 26th. And then council members, if you have any questions that you might need someone else to answer, or shoot them to Jake now, between the next, now the next two weeks. If you do want someone to participate in these, in the hearing on the 20th, the meeting on the 26th that isn't these two folks or our treasurer, please let me know by end of the week, so we can try to arrange that. Okay. Oh yeah, we have lots of business still. Y'all are all set. Thank you for coming this evening. We're gonna move on now to our resolutions. Two of the first ones are pretty simple, just setting our hearing, the public hearing for the budget and the CDV budget. Mr. Vice President.
Yeah, sorry. I would move the resolution to set the public hearing, this is for our fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget, and that would be from May 3rd.
There's a proper motion before, so is there any further discussion on setting that public hearing? Seeing none, could please call it all?
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Spannfor?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
All right, thank you. The next item is for the CDV budget, Mr. Vice President.
We did that.
I'm thinking we already moved that.
We already did that, yeah, I'm sorry. Very good, okay. The next one, we are pulling item C. I got word from the administration and the Clerk's Office and the City Attorney's Office and basically everybody that it wasn't quite ready for primetime, so we're gonna pull the emergency essential services millage restoration proposal off, off the docket for tonight. Which means it will also not be on the council agenda. However, anyone wanting to do public comment on it may certainly still do it, but we're not gonna do it tonight. It's not quite ready. We're missing some figures that won't come until the end of this month. So we need to make sure we have the most accurate numbers before we put it in front of the folks, the people. So we're moving on to the Act, the Public Act 99 financing related to Jackson Field and to the Johnson Controls. And I think Jim Kiefer is here to present to us. Oh, and just so council is aware, because this was kind of new to everybody, we are not prepared to move it out next to the floor tonight. We're gonna do, I'll give you two weeks in case there are questions that need to follow up, and we'll take, we'll take a look at it on the 26th. So, Jim, Rob, Whitigan, whoever's up next, go ahead.
All right, I'll start off, and then I believe for Johnson Control, we have JCI. I don't mean to speak for JCI or Kilpatrick here also, but, sorry, so this is, as you may recall, we've done IPAs in the past. Talking financial type, not the hoppy type. For example, we did it for the ladder truck last year for my department. So financing of the project is provided through installment purchase agreement IPA with the contractor for this one. For the one will be example for Johnson Controls. That's under Act 99 of 1993. And under the act, the city may enter into a contract for purchase of land, property, or equipment, including installation for public purposes and to be paid in installments over the lesser of 15 years of the useful life of the property. For, for both IPAs, I believe for Johnson Controls, Kilpatrick's gonna start off. Looking at my agenda, I'm backwards. First up is TMO and Lugnuts. But for both IPAs, we will be soliciting bids, issuing out RFPs to ensure transparency and obtain the lowest financing costs. But at this time, I, I am gonna kick it off to Jim Kiefer to start off on a quick legal summary of the IPA for Jackson Field Stadium. Actually, before I kick it off, you'll recall this relates back to our February, our fun time February discussions on TMO extending that, that lease agreement out. So this is two parts. One, we have new money for 1.2, sorry, I see.
Before, before you go too far into it, I think Councilmember Spitzley has a question.
Yeah, I'll pause.
I guess I have a plane of orders. So you just, that Mr. Kiefer is gonna give a legal analysis? Is that what you just said?
He's just gonna, so in the resolution before you, Dykema is the bond counsel for this for both IPAs, and then Baird is the municipal advisor for both IPAs. So, sorry, I'm not trying to say that we've replaced Jim Schmerka here, but they drafted the resolution.
That's not my issue.
Okay.
Is, 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 so is Mr. Kiefer, is Mr. Kiefer an attorney? And who does he, what firm does he work with?
Dykema, Dykema will be the, yes, he is an attorney. He's bond counsel for the city of Lansing. So any of our financing deals or IPAs, those, you need bond counsel to draft it and go through that and work with the finance department and the city's municipal advisor. So, and he works for Dykema, Goslet. I'm gonna left something off there, Dykema.
Jim, you're frantically waving your hands.
I just want to point out that our office is very familiar with the Act 99 financing. As a matter of fact, the stadium was purchased and built originally with Act 99 financing. So this installment purchase mechanism has been around a long time. Our office has dealt with it. I've dealt with it personally in different cities. So there's nothing novel about that. And yes, Mr. Kiefer is an attorney, he is on the list with Dykema.
Thank you. Mr. Whitigan, Mr. Kiefer, please continue.
All righty. So let's start, okay, so where was I? 1.25 million is the new monies that's to provide the required changes to Lugnuts Stadium that's required by Major League Baseball, such as the lights, switching over to LED lights. And then the rest of this resolution addresses the refinancing of the original IPA from what, 2014 or 2015? You know, to go to reduce cost and take advantage of the cheap money, I guess, to put it bluntly. So I'll let Jim kind of, or sorry, I'm gonna let Baird do a quick, quick overview of the financing. And then we can kick it back to me and Jim to answer any other questions.
So I guess we'll start with the installment purchase agreement for the TMO. I think we're familiar with what is discussed with the extension of the lease for TMO. And as Mr. Whitigan said, the authorization is gonna address a couple of issues. One is the new money component association, associated with the stadium improvements. The refinancing of any of the, of the TMO's portion of the 2015 IPA. Plus, if you recall, TMO is responsible for paying any termination fees associated with that and the cost of issuing any IPA. And the, if you, the last component, it's not part of the IPA, but if you remember, they are going to be repaying their skipped debt service payment for 2020 as well. And with that, the amount of the outstanding IPA versus what would be new, the difference would be the cost of issuance, which would be borne by TMO and any termination fee.
And I will add again that we're gonna issue, you know, RFPs to obtain the lowest financing costs. When we were working with TMO back in February, it was, you know, assuming a closing date of May 3rd, 2021, we were looking at around 2.35 interest rate. Again, that's subject to fluctuations in the market from, you know, February to today. But that was what we were ballpark of where we're looking. But we'll, we'll issue RFPs for transparency and to ensure lowest.
And please note that an RFP would not be issued until after council has approved the resolution.
Is there some sort of presentation or coherent document we could look at for this? This is rather all over the place.
I can put whatever you'd like together. We do have a one-page, two-page summary for the JCI. But if you'd like me to put something together, I mean, I have a six-page deep dive, but I could do a, a one-page or two-page for council, if that would be more helpful.
Yeah, that would, I mean, at least for me, that would be great. I'm kind of losing track on what we're all talking about here.
Absolutely. I'll just summarize all this and get it to you.
Thank you. I've got two folks with their hands up. First was Councilmember Wood, and then Councilmember Dunbar, and then we'll continue on.
Okay, of the 12.5 million, 1.2 million is for the obligation that we have with the stadium with the lease addendum that was done. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. So how much is then left on the loan that was done in 2014?
So it's trying to look at my notes here, approximately 10 million. So it's, it's a total of 11.5, so 1, 1.25 million is new money and the rest of the 10 million is your 2014 IPA.
So, the information that I got, and maybe I misread it, was I was under the assumption that this was going for some additional work for, for energy efficiencies in other buildings throughout the city. But that's not what this is for. Is that correct?
So you have two IPAs before you this evening on, on agenda. The first one up is Jackson Fields Stadium. The next one that Andy Kilpatrick is here to discuss is for JCI.
So, um, okay, that, that answers my question. Thank you.
You're welcome. And like I mentioned, I'll get you a one- to two-page summary on the Jackson Field IPA.
Thank you.
Okay, next up was Councilmember Dunbar, and then that concludes questions. You can continue, Rob. Thanks.
Thank you. I was just trying to, I was trying to pull up the document that we had presented when we did the signing of that lease deal for TMO, because it had the, it had the breakdowns of each of the IPAs and the refinancing in them to explain what years and the payback amounts. Now, that was based on 2.35 because I think it was Fifth Third was the lender in that one. And the existing IPA from, I think it was, we've been saying 2014, but it might have been 2015, was with a different lender. Is my assumption that this is all gonna be bundled into one ask? For, from a single lender at that lower rate, possibly Fifth Third? Is that?
Yeah, you are correct. I apologize. It was the 2014 agreement, but it was a 2015 IPA. And that 2015 IPA, as you mentioned, is held by Fifth Third. TMO in our negotiation of this new agreement is paying the early termination to, you know, because that's 15 years starting in 2015. So we still got a little bit to go. But they're paying the early termination and then, you know, the RFP will be issued in Fifth Third or Huntington or PNC or Truist, that's who we, I think Truist was who we used for the, for the ladder truck IPA. Anybody can bid on it, and it's packaged in one sweet deal and get the best rate.
And did I understand that the? And did I understand that the amount, the 1.25 or whatever it is that we need to do for TMO for Major League Baseball, that's you're bundling that with IPAs for other improvements? It's not just the 1.25?
That would be correct. Councilmember Dunbar, it would just, as related to the TMO project, they would be one financing. However, there would be individual debt service schedules by purpose so that each entity and you would see, be able to see that.
Okay. Yeah, that was my concern because I want, I would like to be able to isolate. So we know in the document that we had what the refinance would look like from the 2015 IPA, and then we know the 1.2, but this is being bundled with a whole lot more. So.
Keep it, yeah, keep in mind the TMO project has to remain separate. And the reason it would be is because it would have to be federally taxable because the user is a for-profit entity. And then the second installment purchase agreement for the JCI projects would be done on a tax-exempt basis. So we'll keep the two IPAs separate.
Okay, so just to clarify, we have one IPA that's going to combine the, the refinance and the, and the new one for the Lugnuts, and that's in one. And then everything else that's tax exempt is in another.
That's correct. That's correct. So anything related to the baseball stadium would, and that project will all be one IPA and it'll be individual debt service schedules for each of that. So everybody can track it back to what was approved back in February.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Rob, I think with this one, it might be useful to come back to it in two weeks with a little bit more to like to something we can look at. I, because I'm a little confused myself still. And maybe I was trying to manage the meeting or whatnot, but I've got a resolution for Jackson Field for $11.5 million, 1.25 for the stadium improvements. And then I've got another resolution for 12.5 million in general infrastructure, which I know Kilpatrick is going to address in a minute. And he did, they did send a one-pager at like 4:21 this afternoon, so.
Yep, I will basically take Kilpatrick's one-pager and mimic it just for ease of reading and explain the Jackson Field IPA.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kilpatrick, why don't we move on to the larger one in the interest of time?
Certainly. I will just briefly go through what I sent. And as you pointed out, it was, you know, a little after four today. Some of you may have had a chance to look through it, but if not, I will go through quickly as far as the project. And then I think the financing, quite honestly, is the maybe the easiest part to understand on the project. But as far as history, for those of you that have been around the city, you know, we have a lot of buildings and they're all pretty old and in need of a lot of capital improvements. Unfortunately, historically, we have not been making those improvements necessary because we have not had the funds, especially on the general fund side. So in 2019, and council was part of this, we actually started work on a climate action plan, which was finalized in 2020. And one of the recommendations that was made for that, up here we go, look, now you can see what I'm actually looking at on my screen. So one of those recommendations that is that we become carbon neutral and increase energy efficiency of city operations. So even if you set sort of the green part aside, if we are more energy efficient, that will save us money, both in utility bills and on the operational side. So in June of 2019, we had an RFP to do an energy audit of key city buildings and with the hope that we would actually have some self-funded projects that would be paid for with energy and operational savings. JCI was selected to perform that work. And in August of last year, they sent us the final recommendation and the city looked at that over the fall and kind of evaluated that based on the payback of those improvements as well as long-term plans for the facilities. And what I mean by that is some buildings, including City Hall, we might not be here for 20 years. So we didn't want to put something in those buildings that would take a long time to pay back. So that's why we selected the projects that we did. So we signed an agreement in January of this year, and our hope is to start these projects the first half of this year and complete those over the next two years. So, you know, what are those projects? We have over 40 locations and some of those are, say, you know, parks, bathroom facilities or concessions, so small facilities. But then we also have community centers, not Hill because our South Side Community Center because we don't own that building, the school district does, but fire stations, police buildings, office space, including some minor improvements to City Hall and kind of a first phase for the Pedway. So the things that would pay for itself. HVAC improvements, including rooftop units, boiler replacements, lighting, building controls, several roofs, and then building envelope improvements, which really means making the buildings tighter. So weather stripping and caulking and sealing air and then security system upgrades, which is really just upgrading the existing security systems we have in the buildings to current standards. So for the benefits over a 20-year period, and this is kind of what was used to look at, this is now what the life is of these improvements. Most of these improvements will be longer life because you're not going to expect a year, a roof to last only 20 years. But we kind of looked at that to be conservative. So the benefits there would be over $20 million for both energy and operational savings. Johnson Controls looked at the contractors there would be using with the majority of those, those jobs being local. So they are estimating an economic impact there of over $26 million with 193 jobs created during the construction period. And then greenhouse gas emissions reductions over that same life of over 1,400 metric tons. And so that's kind of the, the project overview and why we got to where we are. And as was already discussed, as far as the IPA, that was the financing mechanism that was picked for this, this project and looking at a 15-year term, which is, I believe, what the, the goal is, the total cost of the IPA at just shy of $12 million. When you add in the financing, the interest charges over that 15-year period, it's about $15.6 million. So you can see with savings of over 20 million and a cost of $15.6 million over that 20-year period, the project would pay for itself.
Thank you, Mr. Patrick. I have a couple of questions from council. First up, Councilmember Spitzley, then Councilmember Betts.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Kilpatrick. So I just have a couple of questions. So you guys, did you share the final report that you received with council?
I don't believe the, the final report was shared. That is something we can do. It's several hundred pages. And it really, a lot of it is just, it's estimates of the projects and each of the the facilities.
Did you, have you shared with us the, the recommend, the, the itemized recommendations? Do we know what exactly these recommendations are?
Again, I'm not sure if that was forwarded to council, but that can certainly be shared as far as each of these facilities, if you'd like to look at each facility.
Yeah, I would. I, I, I would. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kilpatrick. And we have another question from Councilmember Betts.
Thank you, President Spatafor, and thank you, Andy, for being here today. I, you, you mentioned City Hall and I'm wondering if applying for this funding and making, and accepting this agreement is going to somehow inadvertently make, make a policy decision on behalf of this council in terms of selling City Hall in the future. Not saying that I support or oppose that, I'm just a little bit worried that, I mean, you know, when you put a new water boiler into a house, the value of that water boiler is, doesn't increase the value of the house by the same amount, right? So I kind of want to understand how this plays into that conversation moving forward because obviously this is a conversation that's been bubbling up for a while and I want to understand the implications of this particular purchase agreement on a future decision that this council might make in retaining or selling City Hall.
Right. And so that was actually a discussion brought up by our municipal advisors that if we were to make improvements in City Hall, you know, anything that was still financed there would have to be figured into a, a sale. So we're, you know, taking into account. And so that's, there were significant improvements that were recommended for City Hall, but we went along with only kind of the, the short payback solutions because we did not know how long we would be here. So if something, you know, things would make a whole lot of sense if we thought we were going to be here 10 or 15 years, but we were not sure of that. So if that is a decision that is made by the administration with council soon that we say, well, some of these options we've been exploring are not going to happen, then we have some other improvements that we would make. But right now they're very short-term or short payback improvements, kind of the low-hanging fruit, and that's all we've accepted there. But you are correct. That is something that we need to worry about, that if we were going to put millions of dollars into City Hall and then sell it, we would not recoup those costs. And so that's why we put just the, the minimal ones. And I'm not sure how many of you have been in City Hall lately and maybe have tried to use the sink or flush the toilet on the 10th floor, but we have a water pump in here that has failed. So that, those are the type of things that really have to be done for us to stay in City Hall short-term. That's not something that's financed for this project, but just an example of things continue to fail in City Hall, the longer we're here. And that's, that's something that I think needs to be considered long-term, you know, for us to either stay or move. But good point. And I think you can probably see once, once we get that list sent to you, the type of short-term paybacks that we have for City Hall and some of the other facilities. And you will note that there will be some facilities that do not have many improvements. For example, Fire Station 9 down off of Cedar Street. The thought was that we really don't know what the long-term plan for that facility is or fire training and the Alpha, the training tower there. Those are all in need too, but there might be better solutions for that. And we're not to the point yet where we know what those solutions would be. So it really doesn't make sense to put a lot of money in those and then make a decision in six months or a year saying that we're, we're moving forward with something different.
Okay, thank you, Andy. This, this just sounds like something that we as council and the administration need to sit down and decide. Obviously, it's an election year, so that's going to put things up. But it sounds like we need to be making some decisions so that we can determine if we should be making some of these long-term improvements to City Hall or not. So I appreciate that and I'll have that in mind. I don't know exactly what our answer to that is going to be, but it sounds like something that we need to be talking about. Thank you again.
Councilmember Betts, I could also add, when we issue the RFP for the JCI purchasing agreement, we're going to stipulate in there that it can be callable within 30 days. And let's say, you know, in a year we get a amazing offer on City Hall, it's gonna, we're gonna stipulate that the City Hall proceeds will help pay off this IPA. So you're not, you know, so anything you do to improve City Hall will then go back into paying, paying off, you know, some or part of the, the purchasing agreement and just reduce our long-term debt.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I mean, I mean, again, that's a good point. My only concern is again, the boiler example where we put something in that's not exactly worth the value. And it sounds like Andy's kind of taken that into account as well, which is, which is excellent here. So thank you. I appreciate your comment.
Okay. Mr. Kilpatrick, were you finished?
Yes, I was. That was my summary. I mean, so if you have other questions, I'll answer those or we do have other folks on. Obviously, if there's financing questions or something specific for, for Johnson Controls, we have folks that can answer those.
I think if we can see the, I think Patricia's asked for the report. If we could see that, that would be great, just to get an idea of what's going on here from a spending priorities perspective. Other than that, I think this one looks, thank you for the, the summary this afternoon. And like I said, in the, on the 26th, we'll look at both of these in the committee, the whole, move them out to the floor that night for, for a vote. So meantime, Mr. Whit again, just if you could quick, just doesn't have to be two pages or any, just a quick summary of the Jackson one to reiterate what we approved in the TMO agreement.
Absolutely.
Please, Patricia, Councilor Spitzley, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is, if we have questions leading up to the 26th, should we just get them to Eric or who? Because I have, I have a ton of questions.
Mr. Whit again, how would you prefer we do that? Would you, would you really go right to you? Yeah, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Yes, but also please copy Mr. Brewer, you know, so we can make sure he's in the loop too, you know, I, I know he's, we've been working pretty closely together. So and I'll, I'll make sure Kilpatrick or is involved if it's JCI.
I'm specifically interested in, you know, in addition to the other stuff that we talked about, but, you know, listening to what Mr. Kilpatrick said about the, the status and the state of City Hall, I'm particularly interested in, you know, you said, you mentioned security system upgrades. I'm assuming that's for City Hall as well. And so I'm really interested in proposed updates. I'm also interested in the proposed updates for the fire stations because you specifically mentioned Fire Station Number Nine. And I know that the fire chief came here earlier in the year asking for funding to put in various laundry services and some other stuff. And so I hope everybody's talking when we're coordinating stuff. I would hate for them to use money and put money and equipment in a building that they're not going to use maybe next year. And so I'm also interested in how you guys are coordinating with the other departments on this document and the recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. So council for questions on this in the next two weeks, if you could please email Mr. Whit again and include Mr. Brewer on that correspondence. That would be great. Get your questions answered by 26th so we can move this forward to get these projects in place. I do, I do appreciate the work that's going to do. I think there's a lot of good things here, you know, even I, I see a financial benefit for sure, but there's the, the greenhouse benefits and the environmental benefits that go along with it, which are measurable to some extent, but long-term and important. So I really appreciate that that's, that's happening after a few years of taking a careful look at it. So I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, next up is, I put my agenda somewhere and I'm missing it. Hold on. Sorry, folks. The budget policies FY 21, 22, again, with these, just they're on here to remind you all as committees meeting, committees are meeting to start looking at those policies and priorities. We will have those looked at by each committee. And then we will wrap them up on May 10th as a, as a council or as a committee, the whole rather, and send them out to the council. And then they will be adopted on the 17th along with the rest of the budget. So make sure that you're doing your committee work on that, you know, particularly where your committee has jurisdiction over the, of the issue, but not necessarily. So I think that does that for that. Is there anything else before the committee, before we take a brief break? Mr. Betts?
I, I'm wondering, thank you, President Spatafor. I'm wondering if we can add something to the budget priorities or the budget policies now that then we can have more discussions about in the future. I just want to put pen to paper so that we have this in our minds over the upcoming weeks.
I don't have it. We can certainly, I would, I would prefer we stick to just the, the committee process and then bring this out to Cal when you have something to talk about from there or on the Cal, you know, at the Cal agenda, but.
Okay, we can, we can talk.
Yeah, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna tell you you can't, but I, my preference would be.
It'll be fine coming up.
Okay.
So appreciate it.
No worries. Any other business before the, the committee? Questions, comments? Okay. Patricia?
Let everybody know I'm going to sign off, so I won't be on council because I'm not feeling well.
Okay. Thank you very much for letting us know. Folks, it's 7:19. I'm going to say at 7:20, let's bring back the council. So come back at 7, 7:20 for the city council meeting.
Was it Spatafor you said a minute?
I'm sorry, 7:30. Add 11 minutes.
Okay. Thank you.
Even I can't run that fast. Brian might be, I see him jogging. He's pretty fast.
Thank you.